Good evening. It's seven o'clock on Thursday, May 13th. This is a meeting of the Belrock Sugar Creek Board of Education in public, and our meeting is called to order. Mr. Liming, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter.
Here.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Liming, would you please give the Treasurers' Report?
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from April 8th and April 22nd, board meetings?
Mrs. Dorn and Mrs. Sloughman. Are there any questions or comments, corrections? All right, Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman.
Yes.
For the Treasurers' Report, could I get a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ending April 2021 as presented with the agenda?
Mrs. Long. Mrs. Dorn.
Just a couple of things to point out. We are two months from the end of the fiscal year. It ends June 30th, and these reports are as of April 30th. You can see on the first blue sheet that we have a couple of the revenue lines that were where we have already brought in more than we anticipated for the whole year. One of those being state funding, because when I did the budget, we had been cut $1.3 million and budgeted an amount with that cut. And then we received some money back from the state on the order of about $400,000 of that $1.3 million. And so that's why that number is larger than was anticipated in June of 2020 when we did the budget. Under expenditures, we are at 79% for salaries, 79% of what we budgeted on salaries, and that's good because 83% of the year has passed at this point.
Mm-hmm.
If you notice, under expenditures, purchase services, supplies, materials, and capital outlay are all well below the 83%. That's because during the pandemic, we did not spend much money on those items with online education, things like that. Any questions about the budget itself? I've included several other. The pie charts are there showing some of the numbers I just mentioned, and also have the balances for the last 20 years in the general fund and balancing out summary that I submit with every board meeting.
Are there any questions for Mr. Liming? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Mrs. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes. Motion passes.
Could I get a motion to approve the five-year financial forecast from 2021 to 2025 as presented with the agenda?
Mrs. Long. Mrs. Sloughman.
Just to review that one, I don't know if you have that, Josh, the forecast that we can put up there. If not, you can get by without it probably. It's the blue, I'm sorry, not the blue copy. It's right behind the blue copy in your agenda. Okay, several things that I want you to know. I always say this when we review a forecast for approval, that this is an estimate for the next five years, three years of history in the left columns. And I like to point out some of the things I've included in this forecast because they make a big difference in what the numbers are, whether or not these things are included. For instance, we have, I've budgeted for the new special ed supervisor.
Hey Kevin, just before we go on here, Josh, can you project that?
Okay, thank you. Some of the things that, without looking at the actual form itself, some of the things that are included, a new special ed supervisor is under purchase services because we're not the employer, that person would be the ESC. We have the partnership with Career Center that we approved to save four salaries actually over the next two years. Of course, the passage of the levy that occurred last, on Tuesday, first Tuesday in May. I projected 7.5% increase all the way out in medical insurance. Hopefully, that won't happen, but it has happened two years in a row. And bringing back the positions that we talked about, bringing back if the levy passes, those are in there. And then 6% increase in the purchase services line item, which really includes everything but salaries, benefits, equipment and supplies. Everything else pretty much is a purchase service, utilities and all those things. So those are all included in here. And still difficult to see because this is a form used by the state of Ohio for me to complete, send back to them. It's due May 31st, so it has to be approved tonight unless we're going to have a special meeting between now and May 31st. And the form itself is included here. I just wanted to show you the first line up there under revenue. It has, it reflects the passage of the levy where we collect half of the money in fiscal year '22 because the collection starts in January, and that's in the middle of our fiscal year. So then the other half is included in the last three years of the forecast. One of the years is higher because of the real estate appraisal on Inside Millage, and the others, we just figured a 1% increase. State funding is frozen all the way out. We either are on the guarantee where it's literally frozen or we're small increases and small decreases depending on the number of students that we have from year to year. Let's see. The salary figure for this current year, fiscal year '21, is lower than the others because we did receive some coronavirus grant money, and we were able to supplant that and pay some of our psychologist salaries and our Bellbrook Academy salaries, things like that out there that normally would be coming out of general funds. So this is general fund only. The forecast does not have any of those other grants or other funds in here. You can look at, the key line's always 7.01, cash balance at the end of the fiscal year. You can see we're in the black all the way out, and we really are only in the red. The line above that is our, I might say, operating profit or loss. We're only in the red the last year of the forecast on that. And that's what you expect to see when you just pass the levy. If you just pass the levy and they're showing you a bunch of red negative numbers, something's wrong.
Yes.
Any questions about the forecast?
Kevin, I've got a few comments here. One, first of all, the community should understand, as well as the attendees here, of course, tonight, this five-year forecast is on the school's website. You can also go to the state, Board of Education, sorry, the High State Education website, and you can also find both this one and historical ones, not just for this school district, but for all school districts throughout the state of Ohio. What's really important for folks to understand is that if you go to our website, you're going to see again this same thing you get from the state's website, but you also see another document associated with that, and it's called Assumptions. And it goes into some level of explanation as to what these individual line numbers mean. But we'll also answer a question, and Kevin, help me out here. I read that today, and what I saw was that from the property tax revaluation, or sorry, personal property revaluation throughout our community, and also the new construction to include home improvements and things like that, if I read it correctly, it's going to result in the school district getting approximately $400,000 per year additional, correct?
Right.
Okay.
That's during the reappraisal year, it's when the $400,000, take it back, they're going to stay there.
Right. Yes. Yeah, so I know, you know, there was a lot of angst and confusion and concern throughout the community with respect to revaluation, especially with it arriving last November when the levy was on at the same time. And, you know, some folks found their home values have gone up 20%, 25%. And then they maybe, like many did, just assumed that that's how much their property taxes were going to go up. I had some communication with a particular individual, you know, and they were talking about how much their property taxes went up over the year. They thought it was $1,200 due to the revaluation. It was actually $350. And then they had this assumption that the school was going to mightily benefit from it. When you figured it out, of their $350, the school was going to get $17 from their additional $350 they were going to pay for the revaluation. And so it's really important that the community, and it's a very complex topic, very difficult to understand even if you want to dedicate the time to it. And the reality of it is, only approximately 12% of this school's budget is affected by property revaluation. It's the Inside Millage, and it normally goes up, but it could go down, right? If you had a collapse of the property values or whatever. And that amount, which gets adjusted every three years that we do the revaluation, was at six.
It's every six.
Okay, every six.
Every three years, every three years, they do what they call a triennial update.
Okay.
Where they give some inflationary increases and things, but they don't come out and look at your property. That only happens every six years.
Okay. So every six years, four and a half mills of our 40-some effective mill budget gets influenced by property values going up or down. And so, you know, there was a narrative that the school was really making out, you know, between property revaluation and COVID funding, and neither of those were the case. As Kevin said, Kevin Liming said, our state funding effectively was reduced by $900,000 over the last couple of years. And we, on a $29.8 million budget, we're getting an extra $400,000 next year on the revaluation. And what was surprising with the revaluation, for those that live in, I'm just making numbers up here, let's say a $100,000 home, for some reason, those properties went up more proportionate in value than, let's say, a home that's a $300,000 home. And so unfortunately, those folks bore the brunt of the property tax increase because as a whole, the community's paying essentially the same thing on existing properties. So in some cases, you'd have somebody in a $300,000 home had their property taxes go down, and you'd have somebody in a $100,000 home had their property taxes go up. But what I'm really trying to most convey here is that the school district did not make out from the revaluation, and we didn't really know what that was until Kevin reported that through this five-year forecast. And in particular, the notes that will become available. I don't think they were there online today, right? So they will be after this meeting.
Right. Josh is sending them. He's got it.
Okay. So what you'll be able to do is, after tonight's meeting, you'll be able to go look at the five-year forecast, and you'll also be able to look at the assumptions that go into that five-year forecast. And it really does help you understand, you know, these are interpretations for you of a very complex topic. And the other thing I asked for, I saw some feedback from the community. When you go into the five-year forecast, as you see, there's a score, there's a quart of lines there, right? I don't know, there's 45, 40 lines or whatever. What do those things mean? It's pretty complex, and not too many people can pass even a multiple choice test on that, much less a fill-in-the-blank one. And so I asked you, Mr. Liming, to actually create an index on our webpage so you can go look and say, well, what exactly is unrestricted state grants? You know, and actually spell out in plain English what that means. What is, I don't know, advances in, you know? What is restricted federal grants and aid as opposed to restricted state grants and aid? Property tax allocation? Just literally go line by line and in plain English. I would suggest creating a key, a legend, a document that explains that so the average citizen can go in there and have some idea of this pretty complex vernacular that's being used here to describe our budget. So I think that would be a good thing, to try and be more transparent with the community as to what's going on. There's nothing hidden here, but at the same time, the complexity of it hides it, and that's unfortunate. And so we can do a better job as a school system of trying to explain the content, you know, that you'll find within these very complex funding documents. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I need to approve it, so Mr. Liming, please call the roll.
Okay. Mrs. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, going on to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence to share?
I am writing to voice my concerns about the children and...
Move your microphone closer to you.
I am writing to voice my concerns about the children, especially at the primary and elementary level. Students wearing masks for the school, at school for the '21-'22 school year. I am currently a teacher in another district and see on a personal level how ineffective wet mask-wearing is for young students. With constant reminders that take away from instruction time, it is difficult for the younger students to wear them properly. Throughout most of the day, about half of the young students I teach have them on not appropriately, even after several reminders. Not to mention how dirty the masks get on young children, and they still continue to wear the dirty masks throughout the days. I have a student at Belrock Sugar Creek Schools as well who does not enjoy wearing the mask. I truly believe this contributes to her disliking school this year, along with all the COVID measures. I want a different experience for my child and all of the other ones who have not yet had a normal school experience. I am really hoping next year we can return to normalcy and make mask-wearing optional, especially for grades K through 3. The younger kids need to see their friends and teachers' smiles and also be able to see the teacher's mouth when being taught reading and letter sounds. Please take my email into consideration when making decisions for the children at Belrock Sugar Creek Schools so they can have an enjoyable school experience next year because, speaking from a teacher's point of view, it was pretty miserable. And then got another one just as we were coming in. My name is Michelle Cudding, and my children attend Belrock Middle School. I am also a nurse in an intensive care setting for 22 years. I would like to give you my opinion regarding the requirement of children at BSS to wear masks once the new school year starts in August. We are now 14 months into the pandemic, and every person that has a desire to receive the COVID vaccination has most likely been able to get that. The cases of COVID in Ohio have decreased significantly in the last month, and contact tracing and studies are showing that children are not spreading COVID like once believed. I was glad to hear that Governor Devine will be lifting the mask mandate in three weeks and is leaving the decision to require children in schools to wear masks up to each school district. I hope that the board will consider this recommendation from the Ohio Department of Health and will make masking optional for the 2021 school year. Thank you for your time, Michelle Cudding.
I can also say that I hope that that's, that we're able to do that as well. I know that masks are a nuisance, particularly for primary students. But we'll have to wait and see what the county regulations are at that point in time. But it's kind of a wait and see, but I think that we're on the right track to be able to do that. Anything else from folks?
I'm just going to chime in and say, in regards to both of those, those pieces of correspondence, as well as a number of informal conversations I've had with parents throughout the district, I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for the rest of you, but I'm on that same page personally as a parent. And I'm advocating for not new normal, but normal, normal next year. And again, I don't think any formal decisions are being made tonight, but that's where I stand, and I thank those folks for reaching out because that is really helpful.
All right, any other?
Want to also note that it is on the Items Information Discussion at the end, is the '21-'22 school year, so...
More to come.
Maybe more to come. And then also, you know, there may be some folks here that want to share their thoughts during open communication also. So we can definitely, at the end here, revisit that conversation.
All right, now it's time to go to Good News Recognition. And so I'm going to move down there and invite some folks to come on up and be recognized. Navigate all these at the same time. The first one is for our valedictorian for the class of 2021, Dylan Eppers.
It's not very long. Board members, administrators, and citizens of Belrock, thank you for welcoming me here tonight. Thank you for this recognition. I am profoundly grateful. I was working on my commencement speech for this Saturday. Wish me luck and good weather. As I searched for some ideas, I came across a quote from Hamilton the Musical that struck me as appropriate for this forum. Alexander Hamilton says the line, "Legacy. What is legacy? It's planting a seed in the garden that you never get to see." Over the past two years, we've seen much discord in this community related to the school levy. This is not something that has gone unnoticed by Belrock students. Every student is appreciative of the opportunities that are available at Belrock schools, from the STEM programs to the arts, to athletics, and to all the extracurriculars, and we rely on them for our future endeavors. We realize that we receive an outstanding education and cannot be more thankful. We are blessed to have teachers, administrators, and a community that supports us. We know that voting to tax yourself more is a burden on everyone, especially on those with fixed or limited incomes. Now this brings me back to the Hamilton quote. Legacy. What is legacy? It's planting a seed in a garden you never get to see. As students, we are your legacy. You may not see all that we become and all that we do, but your investment in the schools is an investment in our collective future, an investment in those that will carry forward the spirit of the Belrock community in wherever we may go and in whatever we may do. It is from the bottom of my heart that I say for myself and for all the other students, past, present, and future, thank you. Thank you for your investment in us and in the community. Thank you for allowing us to be your legacy.
This year, we have two, or co-subjectorians, and one of them is here with us this evening, Alyssa Warren. Congratulations on being co-subjectorian for the class of 2021 from Belrock High School. Tell us a little bit about what's going to happen for you here in the future.
Oh, I will be attending the University of Cincinnati in the fall in my Medical Sciences program. I'd just like to thank all my teachers. They've been very instrumental in everything for the past four years.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a presentation by the Daughters of the American Revolution for a Good Citizen Award. And Janine Montgomery is coming forward to give the presentation.
I hope it's okay to take off my mask with us so you can understand me. We are so pleased to be able to present the DAR Good Citizens Award to Kaylee Riggs. And we want to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to come tonight. And I want to explain a little bit about the DAR Good Citizens Award. Also want to thank Mark Carrera for working with me on finding a wonderful, outstanding representative of Belrock High School seniors. The four prongs of the Good Citizen Award are dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism. And Kaylee filled out a wonderful application, and she did an essay about American citizenship and how citizens play such an important role in our country. And we just want to invite her to be a part of the future that she's going to enjoy at University of Chicago. And we wish her the best in her future endeavors. And I'd like to just read this proclamation to her right now. Kaylee Riggs, having been selected as a DAR Good Citizen of Belrock High School for the current year and having demonstrated the qualities of dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism, is hereby awarded the DAR Good Citizen Certificate Katherine Green Chapter. And we represent members throughout the Miami Valley area, and we have one or two people from Belrock that are members. We try to preserve American history through education, also through preservation, and also promote patriotism. So we're real happy to present this to you, Kaylee, on behalf of our chapter.
Thank you very much, Janine. We also have a number of teachers who are retiring this year, and we want to recognize them. So in alphabetical order, we have first Chris Burkey. Chris has been teaching in the Belrock School District for 25 years, and most recently at the high school in Language Arts. Was it always Language Arts at the high school? So quite a legacy there as well.
I would just like to thank this community for taking a chance on me. And it was so great to see Dr. St. Pierre here tonight, who was instrumental in making that decision. that decision. And it was also so wonderful, Daylon, what you said, because when I was on my way here tonight, I was thinking about what is my legacy now after all of these students and all of these years? And it is clearly all of the students. And I thank you so much for saying that tonight, and thank you to everyone.
Our next retiree is Toni Chiflin. Toni has been in the Bel Brook School District for 15 years with our junior ROTC program after serving in active duty in the Air Force before that. So congratulations and thank you very much. Did you want to say anything?
I'd like to thank Dr. St. Pierre for hiring us 15 years ago, myself and Colonel Longo for starting this program, and Chris Baker. It's been a great ride.
Next is Peggy Collier. Peggy has been someone that I have seen frequently as a volunteer at Stevensville. Oh, neither volunteer, you have the T-shirt, of course. For 33 years of service in our community, has always been in second grade, always in second grade. Congratulations. Our next is Kim Lord. Kim has 24 years of service with our district and most recently in STEM at the middle school, but it hasn't always been STEM, has it been?
Math and Science, middle school.
Thank you very much. All right. Getting my things out of order here.
I just wanted to mention after listening to Daylon as well, I'm a Bel Brook High School graduate, and years ago, the community invested in me. And I have never been so proud and so grateful to give back to my community, to see all of my former students who I know will also give back to our community. And so I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Dr. St. Pierre, Janess Sigmund, the late Larry Will, who we all love dearly, who again looked at this Bel Brook graduate and said, you can make a difference. And I hope in these 24 years and 3,600 students later that maybe I have. So thank you.
Michael Quinn, for 14 years of service to Bel Brook School District. Michael has worked in our transportation department as a bus driver. Bus drivers are the ones who can help set a student's tone for a student's day, you know? And so what an important part you play in getting them here and getting them ready. So congratulations and thank you very much.
I really enjoyed being a bus driver in this district. Students can really set the tone for bus drivers too, let you know that. But I loved it. It's fun to see them on your bus as third graders, and the next thing you know, they're graduating. So it's great to see them grow up. And I met a lot of great people along the way, so I really appreciate this.
Next, we have Teresa Riddick. Teresa has 25 years of service to students in the Bel Brook School District. She has served as an admin in the intermediate school, but always in intermediate?
I started at Sugar Creek Elementary. I've been through three superintendents, two of them are here tonight. And we were talking about legacy. My legacy is in that row right there. I have grandkids, and my kids, my son-in-law, they all graduated from Bel Brook, and now I got a grandkid too. And I had to write this down. One will graduate, and this will make us all feel old, in 2031, and another in 2034. Not sure if y'all will be around. I won't be, but.
It's just around the corner. So congratulations. And if there's anybody who knows what's going on in the school building, it's the admin at the front desk. So thank you very much. One of our retirees is not able to be here this evening unless I am mistaken, Cynthia Raden. Okay. For 25 years of service, she has been at Bell Creek, an intervention specialist, and we'll get this to her at a later time. And finally, we have Virginia Saunders. Virginia has 23 years of service to our district, also as a bus driver, and also setting the tone for our students' days. So congratulations.
Sure. Well, I started driving a bus, well, about 24 years ago, and I had friends that drove, and they're like, yeah, you gotta drive a bus. It's so much fun. And I thought, yeah, I'll do this until my kids graduate. So, well, it's been 15 years since our youngest graduated. So I think I liked it. But yeah, I just love the people I've worked with and all the great people we've met through the years, with all the different buildings and the kids, of course. It's been a lot of fun.
We also have strategic recognitions for Dave Landright, 2021 Dayton Regional STEM Centers STEM Education School-Based Collaboration Award. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. We have some students who are going to show their projects. These are our senior design projects. They're going to run up and grab their props because at the last board meeting, you guys had the BSEF actually funded part of their projects. They're going to show them real quick. But I'd like to thank the entire community, especially the students, for really their reflection of this reward. It's not me and my administrator back there, Dave Hand, for really supporting us this last year, which has been an interesting one.
Yes, indeed. Well, also, we have the recognition for Blake Barnes as well for the 2021 Dayton Regional STEM Centers STEM Education School-Based Collaboration Award. That's when he's on his way back down here. Sorry about that. I was trying to get these guys squared away. I was here, I did a lot of verbal vomit a few months ago, so I won't bore you to tears with the same stuff. But like Dave said, these guys, and I was not listening when I went up there, but we've got a majority of the crew here, missing a few because just like many of our Bel Brook students, they're involved. So Rebecca with band, Michael Socker, and Spencer with trap and field. So they didn't get to make it tonight, so the rest of the guys here can present. Quick congrats to Kaylee, Daylon, and Alyssa, all Gold Star students, well-deserved recognition for those three. These guys, Tyler, you going to speak?
Yeah, I'm John.
All right. Tyler, you come up first.
All right. So this is our project that we've done. I'm Tyler Holding. This is Ryan Dittman, and that's Matthew Exkoffen on the side. This is basically our senior year capstone project, if you would call that, for high school. What this is, is this is a robot that was designed to shine UVC light down at a desk to disinfect it properly. We felt that the current method wasn't as efficient as it should be, which is just spraying and wiping down with a paper towel. So UVC light, we found worked a lot better. So this is our final prototype that we were able to fabricate. We would like to thank, obviously, the STEM teachers, Mr. Landright and Mr. Barnes. We would like to thank school administration. We would absolutely love to thank BSEF because we wouldn't have this physically here for you if they didn't help us out. Of course, we'd also like to thank the math department and the science department because we wouldn't be here without them. Ms. Lord, I'm sure none of us would be standing up here if we didn't take STEM with you, so thank you for that as well.
This is John. John, come up here. So John's the sole man of his crew. The others are the ones that are involved, so he's going to speak about his project real quick.
Good evening. The project that we were trying to solve, the problem we were trying to solve was detecting concussions on football players through an impact on their helmet and their change in acceleration. The point is to have a mic controller and a battery help control and the accelerometer inside and measure the acceleration that helmet will go through when a football player is hit on the head, and a light would indicate when a force has been concussive or not. I'd like to thank the STEM teachers, Mr. Barnes and Mrs. Landright, and you too, Mrs. Lord, the Bel Brook administration, and BSEF funding for helping make this project possible.
Very good. Thank you. All right. We're going into open communication time, but before we do, if there are those who are planning to not stay any longer, you're always welcome to, but if you're not planning to, we'll take a short stretch break and let you have an opportunity to exit. First, we have Mike Kinsey on the back-to-school plans.
I join you tonight to ask basically two questions. First, I'd like to learn, what's the most helpful way that parents can provide input to you for what school should look like in the fall? And second, to whom should we direct that communication? So for my first question, I've seen that on the agenda, public meetings are up there. I'm not going to say a whole lot. I was happy to see that. I'm going to sit back and relax, but I hope that those public forums can be used to encourage parents to share their thoughts so that we can partner with you in our back-to-school plans for this fall. I imagine nobody wants to make important decisions like that unilaterally without input. We've all learned a lot over the past year, and the time to return our schools to normal has arrived. It's been confirmed again and again that children, especially those under the age of 12, are almost universally unaffected by this virus. We've known that good news for a very long time, but now we can couple that scientific fact with widespread vaccine availability for anyone who wants it. There's now more supply in Ohio than demand for vaccines, and that's really good news. That means that every single teacher, staff member, and frankly, every member of our community aged 12 and up, starting today, can make a personal choice for how they want to protect their own health. To quote Governor Dline from his statewide address just yesterday, he said, "There comes a time when individual responsibility simply must take over." I believe the governor is right. Now that everyone has a choice for their personal protection, the time has come for individual responsibility. That's probably a lesson we want to teach our students. The time has come for individual choice regarding our children's health to be returned to each and every parent. It's finally time, after 14 months, to allow for consideration of our children's mental health and social development and return them to the best possible learning environment. But I do want to be 100% clear as to where our input should be directed. That was kind of my second question. And this is an honest question, as I'm truly unsure, who will ultimately make the final decisions for next year's policies? Are back-to-school policy decisions made by the superintendent? Does the administration make those rules? We do know that the decision is not made by the Green County Department of Health. They're very clear in all of their communications, I brought some of them with them tonight, that what they offer to schools are just guidelines. They're not regulations. They're not laws. I assume the decisions around these important policies will ultimately be decided by a vote from you, our elected representatives. And I think I have a little bit of time left, so can I ask, is that correct? Am I correct in that assumption, or do I need to be corrected?
It's the responsibility of the board to set policy.
Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time. Thanks for letting me speak. And sincerely, as a parent, thank you for the care and service you provide to the community.
Thank you. Next, we have Astrid Caphammer. Have I pronounced that correctly? Astrid, my apologies.
Thanks. All right. That's good. That really wasn't intentional to be bad. Okay. My name is Astrid Caphammer, and I have three children. You can't hear me?
There we go.
Okay. And I have three children in the district. I'm also the president of the PTO. And as many of you know, I care deeply for our schools and our community. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of many parents, teachers I've spoken to, and many community members. By now, you should know I am your solid ally. My words are coming to you with the best of intentions for success. Good relationships are the key to success in all aspects of life. Trust and communication are the foundation of maintaining good relationships. Unfortunately, the school district and our community have a broken relationship. The passage of this levy does not mean the relationship has been repaired. This levy passed in spite of the broken relationship. This levy was passed because parents and the community want the best for our children, and we were successful. However, the underlying issue is still there. The community has extended an olive branch to the district by passing this levy. The ball is now in your court, and I sincerely hope you play. You cannot remain complacent. It is now up to you to receive this olive branch and meet people the way in which they want to be met. This means you need to have community town hall meetings. Our community is full of incredible people who will bring intelligent and creative ideas to the table. Good, working relationships bring about information, and information is power. I'm sorry, but this is not done by hosting coffees. This needs to be done on a much larger scale. It needs to include the entire board and all the administrators at the district office. Please, please host town hall meetings. I cannot stress this enough. People want to be heard, and it is the responsibility of the district to listen to people's frustrations. It's your responsibility to listen. sorry, but this is not done by hosting coffees. This needs to be done on a much larger scale. It needs to include the entire board and all of the administrators at the district office. Please, please host town hall meetings. I cannot stress this enough. People want to be heard. It is the responsibility of the district to listen to people's frustrations. It's your responsibility to listen to possible solutions. And it's your responsibility to work together to get things done. Please, take action immediately. We responded in kind to your emergency that you presented to us. We are asking that you now respond to our emergency that we are presenting to you, and we want to talk. I'll give you an example. Busing, there's a major outcry for busing right now, to come back. I would strongly urge you to have a community town hall meeting just for this one topic, and to also have another town hall meeting for going back to school next year, and masks and regulations. Please, please start listening. Passing this levy was only the first step of many steps that need to be taken to achieve our common goal. Although we can all breathe a sigh of relief that the levy passed, we cannot explain victory. We will be victorious when efforts to heal the division are made and achieved together. Thank you. And I also want to say, Mr. Price, when he talks about this, he is speaking for us, and thank you for listening and taking action. I'm sorry again about my mask.
I hope Mrs. Dorn is going to be able to retrieve it for you.
Okay, it's good.
If I'm looking at that right there, it's actually kind of hard to do, right? Isn't there a big net there to keep things from falling down in there?
Yeah, there's a gaff right there that's big enough to...
I don't know about that.
I got one. Thank you. This is actually mine. Yeah.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, next, we have Paul Sampson with Strategic Funding.
Perfect segue. Hello, Dave. A perfect segue to this is that congratulations to the board, Dr. Kozad, to the parents and to the community for this most recent levy. I hope that you can sit back and relax for a very brief period of time, because I know that, Captain, you and I worked together on other forms of financing the district. And I think it's important that while we take advantage of the levy and use it for great purposes, hopefully including something as simple as busing, that we also think about the next step, because this can continue to kick, its prices continue to climb, and salaries continue to climb, and things like that. So I would encourage the district and board to think about the next step towards funding our school systems. And hopefully, that'll include something as simple as an earned income tax. Not a popular thing, but this will segue us nicely, not just for the next four years, but for the decades to come. I had three kids in this school district. Abby Carpenter was my oldest's classmate, and I had a class of 11 and a class of 18, all doing great, thanks in part to the teachers we just saw and to the board here. So congratulations.
Absolutely. Thank you, Paul. If you don't mind me commenting on the earned income tax, a person who makes $100,000 a year and gets paid every two weeks, has $9.60 come out of their paycheck for a quarter percent tax. Just as a reference point, I think you're right that it's a direction we need to explore. Mike Brugman on the way.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Yes, my name is Mike Brugman. I have two kids in the school district, two young sons. And I just wanted to get up and say thank you for the flexibility that you afforded us parents. We did select to do the online school all year. It turned out really great, actually. We had some growing pains at the beginning, as we all know. But in the end, we just got done doing the math testing, bringing our kids in for that, and my son came home and was exclaiming how he scored the highest he's ever scored by 10 points. You know, so there was some gain there over the year. Additionally, we were riding our bikes through the neighborhood, and we saw another boy riding his bike on his own driveway. And my son said, "I recognize him from our Google meets." And so we went over there, and they got to ride bikes outside together. So they got to make new friends even through that online community. I just saw Mrs. Lord here. I've seen her all school year through my son's Google meets. It's the first time I've met her in person. So that was exciting, too. Also, just wanted to thank, I know the teachers have been very proactive in contacting us all through the year with problems, not just online technical problems, but issues dealing with assignments and making sure that everything was up to date. And the teachers, the online teachers this year have just been incredible, and we really appreciate that that choice was given to us. Finally, I just want to say thank you, Mrs. Dorn. I got up here about a year and a half ago and mentioned the school calendar and maybe aligning it to the federal holidays. And I've been watching the school board meetings online. I saw you bring that up the other day. So thank you for remembering that. And ultimately, for this, for the community, I feel like we've had tremendous opportunities to provide our feedback to you folks. I know I've emailed school board members and Dr. Kozad, teachers and principals. And I'm always very surprised, actually, how quickly everybody gets back to me about certain things. So the responsiveness has really been good. I've attended some of the community events, the coffees. And I actually like the closer, small group, one-on-one interactions. So that's been great. I know many people feel that maybe our voices aren't heard if things don't go your way, whether it's masking or busing or anything else. But I do feel like my voice is heard, even if things don't go my way. You guys have had to make some incredibly hard decisions over the last year with everything going on with school. And, you know, some things didn't go the way I wanted it. But I think that you guys have done a good job with trying to make the best decision with everybody's best interest in mind. So just wanted to get up here and say thank you.
I believe so. Yes. Going now and now to the superintendent's report.
Yep, so superintendent's report, 7A, certificated license employment resignation, leave of absence, and supplemental duty. So it is a consent agenda. So we're doing 7A, 7B. And then there's also board members of hand carry. I don't know if, Mr. Lord, if you have that hand carry, if you can, I know there's a lot of, a few pages here. You can throw that up there also. So the hand carry that you have of those additions for support staff, employment resignation, leave of absence, and to note that the one that is deleted there, that is crossed out, so we will not be acting on that this evening. So consent agenda 7A, 7B, certificated license employment resignation, leave of absence, supplemental duty, and then support staff, employment resignation, leave of absence, 7B, and hand carry.
Okay. Poor voters is there. Any other that you would like to pull out of the tree separately?
No, but Dr. Kozad, would you mind, because I asked this question this morning, it's not super apparent. So for anyone else who might be confused or reading this, 7A3, could you just explain how that is?
7A3 is recommend non-renewal of supplemental duty contracts. So these are non-teaching employees. So these are automatically non-renewed every year because according to our contract, our current staff have the first right to fill those. And once those are not filled by our staff, then they get opened up to non-teaching, non-staff employees. So this is a yearly occurrence in May.
Yes, nothing needs to be pulled off. Just wanted to clarify.
All right. From my perspective, 7A, number 10, I'd like to pull Mrs. Keaton to address that one separately. So after we do our consent agenda, we'll address that one. Is there anything else? Or anyone else? All right, we have a motion for the consent agenda items 7A and 7B, except for 7A10 for keeping. We have a motion?
It's a motion to pull some off.
Oh, so spread the consent agenda.
Send to the rest of it?
Send the rest of it.
Sorry, some of...
Okay, thank you. That was Mrs. Dorn and Mrs. Law. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda items? All right, Mr. Lam, please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Motion passes. So for item 7A10, Mrs. Keaton, do we have a motion for the recommendation from the superintendent? So, Mr. Price? It's a motion for his recommendation for the superintendent's recommendation. Mrs. Keaton, for an elementary principal for a year.
Sorry, can you take your mask down? You're asking if we are motioning to vote?
We are looking for a motion in a second.
To vote on the recommended recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mrs. Long. Are there questions or comments?
Who first? Who was the first on that?
Kevin.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Price, and then Mrs. Long. I would make a motion that we amend the recommendation to be for two years instead of four years. So is there a second to the motion to amend? Mrs. Sloughman. So the discussion is to, is regarding the amendment and not the original motion. Are there any comments or questions? I'd like to comment. We have received some very glowing recommendations from Mrs. Keaton, and some that were absolutely not glowing recommendations. The fact that both perspectives would be adamant about their positions points to a culture which is highly divided. There seems to be a population that is treated as first class and another that is second class. There are the haves and the have-nots. The fact that there are those who feel safe and secure in the workplace and those who do not feel safe points out a serious problem, and I believe it is a problem of leadership. For me, I am vigorously committed to ensuring our school's fostered environment where all employees are able to bring their full self to the workplace and are met by an environment of respect and inclusion. And I believe our students benefit by the difference that that makes. I think four years is too long a time to wait to see if that culture improves. Even two years is more than enough and should be sufficient. I know that each of us has to choose for himself and herself on this issue, but for me, in respect for the individual and safety in the workplace, especially for those who look to us for leadership, these are core values which I cannot and will not compromise. Are there any other comments?
Mr. Carpenter, I've been on the board for a year now. I'm aware of zero complaints, zero substantive complaints. And I just, I can't accept that there are statements of support for her and there are statements in opposition to her, and I have nothing to look at in front of me to justify, substantiate that. There's methodologies through the teachers' union. There are methodologies through direct contact to the superintendent by which employees that are aggrieved by this situation, they have recourse. And I'm aware of absolutely zero that is substantive, that I can read, that I can put my hands on, that I can talk to somebody about. So I cannot in any sense support what you're advocating for tonight.
Additionally, I 100% agree with you, Kevin. Not only have I not received a single communication regarding Ms. Keaton in negative light, I have received a number in a positive light. And personally, as a parent, I have also had an incredibly positive experience with both Ms. Keaton herself and Stephen Bell, or both of my children.
Again, our school district employees should understand, whichever school, whatever situation, regardless of your position, if you have a complaint, there are proper channels to convey that. Again, go through your union, go directly to the superintendent, go directly to your nearest chain of command supervisor, whatever. But at the end of the day, I cannot go off of words of mouth, you know, some message that somebody got somewhere. There needs to be much more, there needs to be irrefutable substance to a complaint before I can by any means in good conscience take action on it. So please, if you are in a situation that is uncomfortable, and I've been there, okay? I worked at the base, right? Even in my military status, I had a civilian, I hate to call him supervisor, he was like a deputy for the organization, probably one of the worst human beings I've ever encountered in my life. And, you know, if I had been staying there, especially if I'd been a civilian, I absolutely would have filed, you know, complaints against him, and there would have been an army behind it because it was, he was, you know, just a very difficult and just a bad person, just to put it bluntly. And, but I was only there in military status for about nine months, so I could pretty much tolerate it. And that was it. And he wasn't going to affect my career in any way. So I can somewhat empathize with the situation when someone can find themselves in a situation where they are uncomfortable. But my gosh, you know, there are recourses available to you. Use them. If you don't use them, then I have no response. I can't act on that. And I don't think, I don't see how we as a board could ever, you know, do that. So...
Well, I would say that I do know that people have reported things to the superintendent, prior superintendent, as well as our current superintendent. And I do know that folks are very reluctant to go up the chain because of concerns of what happens if nothing, what happens to me if nothing happens under those, when I report something that is offensive, personally offensive. So I think we need to send a message that that behavior isn't to be discouraged, that we should, I mean, we are advocating that we encourage people to follow their chain of command, and yet, if we never do anything about it, then all it does is send a message that we want you to go there, but we don't, we aren't going to do anything about it.
Mr. Carpenter, this is largely inappropriate, frankly. These are all conversations, sorry, these are all conversations that have been and should be had in executive session. The discussion of an individual employee's performance is not appropriate for this forum.
I do never go into specifics. Are there any other comments or questions? On the amendment? Okay, Mr. Lam, please call the roll for the amendment.
Mrs. Sloughman? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
No.
Mrs. Long?
No.
Mr. Price?
No. So through two yes, then the amendment fails. We're back to the original motion.
Just a second. Mr. Lam, please clarify the vote, because I don't think the audience heard the correction was just made.
There were two yes. There were two yes and three no.
And who were the yeses?
The yeses were Mrs. Sloughman and Mr. Carpenter, and then the other three were no, it's two amendments.
Thank you.
So we are back to the original motion, which is for a four-year contract, an interest fee for Mrs. Keaton. Are there any other comments? All right, Mr. Lam, please call the board.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. We're going on to seven C?
Yep.
High school credit recovery.
Yep, so high school credit recovery, recommend approval in 2021, summer credit recovery program at Belloc High School, May 24th through June 18th, 2021. Cost is $100 for half a credit, $200 for one third or more, instructor Donnie Phelps.
Do we have a motion?
I don't know.
Mrs. Dorn? Mrs. Long? Is there any discussion, questions, comments?
Dr. Kozak, can you explain just super briefly, is this a quote-unquote summer school, is this a catch-up, this is a catch-up program-ish?
Correct, so if anybody, you know, failed the course through the year, they take this?
Is this standard or is this COVID-based?
This is standard.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Right, Mr. Lam, please call the board.
Okay, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Motion passes.
O H S A A membership, recommend approval of resolution authorizing continuing membership to Belloc High School and Belloc Middle School in Ohio. High School Athletic Association for the upcoming 2021-22 school year for students in grades 12, I'm sorry, seven to 12.
Do we have a motion? Mrs. Long? Mrs. Dorn? Questions or comments? All right, Mr. Lam, please call the board.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes.
First Service Management Company, recommend approval of contract amendment to Dexa Management for the period beginning July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. No increase in student lunch prices, or high department nutrition, integrated student supports has given preliminary approval for this amendment.
We have a motion? Mrs. Dorn? Mrs. Long? Any discussion, questions, comments? All right, Mr. Lam, please call the board.
Mrs. Long? Mr. Price? Mrs. Sloughman? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to items of information and discussion. So graduation, class of 2021 is this Saturday, May 15th at 3:30 PM. This is at Holmes Field at Miami Valley South Stadium here at Belloc High School. It looks like it's going to be fantastic weather, so anytime you have an outside event like this, that's what you hold your breath for, cross your fingers. First time we've had an outside graduation, normally it's at Trent. So this begins at 3:30, it is a ticketed event for family, but it will be live streamed. So extremely excited that we can have this in person this school year. Last year, we were on this stage giving diplomas and doing graduation virtually. So I'm very excited, and just kind of an item of information on the presenting thoughts or discussion on that.
Looking forward to it.
Again, congrats to all of them. They've had an extremely unique experience that will definitely outdo the when I was younger and I had to walk two miles up a hill in snow. That doesn't have anything on what these students have gone through the past couple of years. So congrats to them. 2021-22 school year, so I know we had some emails and correspondence. I know there were some folks that spoke about the upcoming school year. Again, I was giving center my thoughts, and we can just have some discussion at this point. Again, as obviously as most of you know, Governor DeWine last night said in three weeks on June 2nd, all the health orders will be lifted. To my knowledge, those have not been signed yet, or not public, the last time I looked today. And so I always wait until I have something in hand to be able to do something because I remember last spring, Governor DeWine said we were on extended spring break, and that's not really what really happened. So you always like to have health orders in hand and those things signed before you really, you know, look forward to doing something. But obviously, it definitely, definitely looks like all those mandates and health and things are going away. So when I say that, that's not the impression I give, that I don't believe that those are going away. Just, you always want to make sure. Again, I was giving my thoughts on that, and really, especially because we do have summer events in the school district, we have camps going on this summer. Actually, the week after school is out, we have a STEM camp, we have girls' basketball going on that are before the June 2nd date. So, and we actually have another week of school. So it is my thought that at this point, we do not do anything differently. It's my recommendation, my thought, for the rest of the school year, we have run the whole school year, we can handle five more days of dealing with masks. And I think if we did anything differently, it would just cause some uneasiness, some apprehension with folks of different conference levels. So we survived the whole year of masks and social distancing and all of that. That would be my thought going towards next year. Again, I know there was a question earlier about where do you send your thoughts and information to? Again, all the board members' email addresses are on the, are on the website. Always, they're more happy for them to email you. My email is on there, or it's at superintendent@bss.k12.ohh.us, or info@bss.k12.ohh.us. It's always a place that you can send any file or concern as the info@bss.k12.ohh.us, and then gets directed to whoever needs to have that information. So, you know, obviously, we need to be looking towards next year. So in my opinion, it'd be premature at this point to really make a 100% decision on that and also of seeking input for, from parents, teachers, community members and so forth is also important. But even though the Green County Public Health is not officially, you know, over us, we do look to them for guidance. They are the scientists, they're the doctors, they're the health experts in the county. So, you know, if you go against what they're saying, probably should have a good reason for doing it and be able to justify for that. But I definitely think it would be hard pressed to go against if the rest of the state is, is the health orders are rescinded or done away with. I think it would be hard pressed for us to probably go against those. And again, that's three weeks away here, and we do have a little time for next year. So I don't know if there's thoughts on that, feedback, information, questions from the board?
I'll chime in just in that, I think Belloc has done a fabulous job this year. There's all things, there's not a person in this room that wouldn't change something. You know, nothing can please everyone in every way, but I think Belloc has, and I commend all of you, I wasn't on the board at the time, at the beginning of last year, making decisions, but Belloc, I think, I think it's pretty safe to say was in school more than nearly any school district in Ohio. And so we've set a stage for leaning forward. I would like to see us at least promise to the community that we will intend to lean forward. Not with exact measure, not with this is exactly what will happen, but that we will continue to lean forward to give our kids back as much normal, 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 not new normal, normal, normal as possible. And that we will engage the community, listen to what parents, community members want to see out of our schools, and that those decisions will not be made in a vacuum this summer. Curious to know the rest of your thoughts on that? Or not?
I think it is certainly important to get the community input. How we do that is probably a good question because of the Open Meetings Act and the regulations that go along with public meetings of organizations. With that said, certainly, I'm also hopeful for a normal, normal as compared to a new normal. We've been through a new normal for a lot of this year, and it's not quite as satisfactory as the normal, normal, that's for sure. Other thoughts, comments? Right, Dr. Kozak, to the levy.
So just going back to that, because as we, for next year, we are, we've been planning for next year since February in one way or another, you know, with schedules, you know, scheduling at the high school and staffing and looking at those things. So for some folks, you know, may seem like, may seem like a really early time to be thinking about next school year, but by the time we have another board meeting, I believe almost everybody will be taking a summer break at that point. So if there's, I really would like some guidance, some information, some because just timelining this out, we probably need to make a decision by June 10th of what we're doing for next school year. If you don't, then we're at June 30th, if we're not doing any special board meetings. June 10th, June 30th, I can't remember what the July one is, the second Thursday in July. So July is, is, in my opinion, too late. And June 10th is pushing it just because, again, so all the various options out there of, you know, if, in my opinion, we are trending in the direction of getting back to pre-COVID school with the, with the idea that some lessons learned in the cleaning of things, of washing hands, of hand sanitizer, of if you're sick, don't come to school, be, you know, you know, take those things seriously. And so if we're trending in that direction, and the state, there's no state mandate, or those health orders end on June 2nd. If we are going in a different direction than that, we need to be making some decisions fairly soon because, like I said, there's summer camps going on. So if I'm in a summer camp the week after school, it's before June 2nd, right now, still wearing masks, because that's until June 2nd. If it's in the middle of June, what's going on at summer camps? So because what we do at summer camps, again, unless things go sideways, would probably feed right into what we're doing in the school year. I'd hate to change course, you know, one way or another, we allow something or don't allow something in summer, and then whoop, we change course. Again, if things don't go sideways, that's the other piece of the whole, the whole thing. So.
But Dr. Kozak, in regard to the before-June 2nd camps, the mandate, if I'm remembering correctly, is only indoors. Are we talking, we're talking about STEM camp, like indoor camps? Whereas we are not requiring masks for outdoor sports activities?
On school property, masks are required at this point, so.
For sporting camps?
Not when they're actually doing the sport, not when they're actually involved in activity. But if they're not involved in that activity, are, so again, what we're doing right now, what we're doing right now is, if you're not involved in the, in the actual physical sport, you are wearing a mask. So.
But that's not state mandate, that's current school policy, current BSS policy.
That's school policy, is, that's what we've done all, we've not changed courts on that.
So we have option there. Indoors mask mandate is still in effect until June 2nd, statewide. I'm going off of memory here, so these are rhetorical questions I'm asking.
Correct, and right now, our policy is, you own school property, you should be wearing a mask.
So is that your first question as to, I guess, I guess we need to break this into chunks. Pre-June 2nd, are we maintaining current school policy throughout, across the board? Are we going to maintain state mask mandate, which is indoors only, and allow outdoor sports camps to proceed? That, question one, perhaps?
That'd be good, yes?
You can surmise my thoughts, right? We've all been pretty quiet.
Well, we haven't changed the policy, so through this year, or until we change the policy, we would still have masks. On June 2nd, we could follow state guidance, but we would have, I think that we would have to change policy at the June 10th meeting if we were going to follow that, because we're allowed to be more strict than the state law, does not necessarily less strict than the state law. So that's, pardon me?
Correct, we're currently being more strict with our outdoor masking.
Yes.
Correct.
How many outdoors camps or like sports camps are we talking about, what are we?
When do they start?
But we're also talking about the rest of sports for the year, graduation. So that's why, you know, if you do one thing, then you, then you've got to follow through on those other things. And the ripple effect and the domino effect, and explaining what's going on and so forth is another hurdle to all of that. Again, just, just my thoughts. We've got three weeks, can we, can we do three more weeks? Can we do three more weeks and then we move on to the state situation, state lifting up health orders?
I think we do.
I didn't realize, so my children are going to STEM camp, and I hadn't even realized they were going to wear masks. I'm in favor, I like how somebody said, I think it was asked, optional. People have, 12 and over have the option to get vaccinated, so why can't the masks be optional, the people who want the extra protection? I do. Personally, I'm fine with, yes, we can do three more weeks. Obviously, we've done it, we've done the whole year, right? I think when we're talking about outdoor sports, go down a second, right? These same kids are not playing sports everywhere else in this community, maskless. And they are playing, are playing with their friends in their backyards, maskless. We are taking yet another social function away. I think I would like to propose, let's finish the school year until the last day of school in our school buildings and whatnot. With kids are used to that, there are five more days of school, let them ride that out. I personally would love to see our seniors be able to graduate and let parents take pictures of them and their faces as they walk across the stage. Even if you want me, you, or parents to be in a you want me, you, or parents to be in a mask, I would, I would love to provide that to our seniors who have had so much robbed of them this year. I would love for their families to be able to take a picture of them with their class without their mask on their face. My personal opinion, if we have that within our power because we are outdoors, because they're going to have some distance between them. Because they all have had the opportunity to get a vaccine, our seniors have had the opportunity to get a vaccine for some time now. I would love to provide that to them. They've lost a lot. So I, I don't think this conversation is only about masks, but we're talking about just the next three weeks. I totally understand, let's ride out the rest of the five days of school for our younger children in our school buildings because why change all this routine at this moment? But I think as we move into summer, I am comfortable with, these are all optional activities as well. So if, you know.
Did the governor say that, or did the regulations change that anything outdoors, uh, doesn't require a mask? Is that in effect now?
I don't think anything outdoors has ever required a mask in Ohio. I don't think, I, I.
No, it seems, it seems like graduation, uh, people, people have the opportunity to social distance.
And the difference is our policy has been outside, we're wearing a mask. That's what, I mean, that's what been our, it's been our policy. So it doesn't, doesn't mean it.
Is that a policy?
The whole year is, uh, kids that have been outside, cause that is this Saturday.
Right, so is that a policy that requires us to have a, um, a reading of it, at one reading and approval at the next?
I don't think that policy ever even got voted on originally by the board, did it?
No, it really didn't.
Okay. But then I, I would, I would move that for the remainder of the year, we, um, choose for outdoor activities to not require a mask on school property? Is there a second?
Or, hold on here, for outside activities during the school day?
Cause recess is, I think what she's doing. It was still masked during recess.
Yeah, like, I thought you were going with that.
We have five days of school left, right, next week. What, what you basically, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're kind of zeroing in on is, okay, let's keep the same game plan we've had all year long for next Friday. But with the exception of trying to make courses for the graduation this weekend, right? Is, is that it in a nutshell?
Basically, yeah. Well, let's keep everything the same until, what is, 20th?
20th.
20th is the last day of school. Everything is same, same, with the exception of graduation. And starting the 21st, that's the next discussion we have. This has been, you know, I think, starting the 21st, if we're just talking masks, I'm comfortable with, we maintain Ohio mandate and like indoor, which is the indoor mandate until the 2nd. I think that's.
I think that's a requirement.
So for some STEM camp or the, the camps that are indoors, those kids are, I would think, would remain. But outdoor sports camps, again, every one of those kids in those camps are playing maskless sports. And they have been all year long. Elsewhere.
I think for own clarity's sake and for those in, watching and, uh, in the audience here and online as well, let's kind of review how we got to where we are, right? So I think David used to said it, there wasn't a policy that the school board adopted last year. It was, as I recall, the superintendent, along with the teachers, union, and teachers representatives, formulated a plan. And then that plan then was, uh, put into action by the superintendent. At best, we as school board members offered opinions, if I remember correctly. I don't recall voting on this. With respect to.
I think we voted on that.
We voted on it.
I cannot remember. It's been eight or nine months or whatever. So, uh, so if we were to make a change, like Audrey just said, is that something we would have to vote on? Or is it within the superintendent's purview to be able to, uh, accept our interest to do something different? Do we have to formalize it? What, what do we have to do here?
I believe it's something we should vote on, since we had voted on it previously. And then, uh, certainly for the, the exception, and then, and then we would defer to the state's requirement for, starting June 2nd. And then determine that, you know, what our next step is then at the June 10th meeting.
Audrey, I think what you were asking for is no mask for graduation and no mask for outdoor sports activities from 21st onward, right? And in that show, isn't that what you're asking for?
I would love that to be.
True.
If we could give students that tonight and then hear from the community regarding what comes after June 2nd as far as, um, indoor masks later. I, I mean, I, I, when, when is our next meeting?
June 10th.
June 10th.
So, um, I, I can't see there being a lot impacted between.
When do the, when do the camps start?
May 24th. One day after.
Are there any other than STEM camp indoor camps?
Hmm, no.
Basketball.
Basketball, basketball is, thank you.
Which they're all playing basketball without masks on. So it's really just you walk in and out of the building.
It's when you, yeah, it's when you're out of the game, when you're out of that. See, the, yeah, the, the challenge of, of trying to, to brainstorm and think through all these things up here on the stage is we keep on thinking of things.
Agree.
And people are very helpful, you know, basketball, yes. So it's one of those things that we were trying to make big decisions on the fly and, um, we definitely don't want to, to, to go down one road, it's really hard to come back from that road, even though I think most of us are wanting to go down that road. You go down a road and then you, you, it's hard to come back from that road. I.e., you take away masks and then at some point say, whoop, let's put them back. That would be extremely difficult to do.
And feel free to chime in on.
But for graduation, that's a pretty distinct individual over, it'll be over, you know, seven, 6:30 on Sunday, you know, so I think Audrey, you're.
3:30 on Saturday.
Sorry, whichever day it is.
3:30 on Saturday.
Keep it straight here.
I don't know what graduation is, too, but.
So yes, uh, so, but the point being is it's, it's, it's a, it's a discreet event, you know, and I, I think you make a good point. Go across the stage, smiling, get your pictures made, you know, et cetera.
And that's a population that has had access to the vaccine as well. Our seniors are all 18, 17, 18.
So again, if you're, if you're asking, can graduates while they're sitting indoor, going across the stage and not have a mask on, is that what we're saying?
I'm asking, are we okay with making graduation a mask optional event?
For everybody? He's an audience.
Folks on the stands and everything.
So I mean, we just, you're just talking about.
Because that is purely a rule that has been self-imposed, that is not statewide guidance for outdoor.
Since it's outdoor, yeah.
We've got plenty of parents sitting in bleachers all around this town. For Hawaii.
I would support that.
From that. Yeah, from a, um, policy perspective, is there a problem making it an exception? I don't, I don't know of a negative reason to not do it from a policy perspective.
The board for graduation that wants to make a maskless, maskless or optional?
Mask optional.
Yeah, mask optional.
Can do that.
Right. So then.
Graduation is, is mask optional? Any other outdoor events are still masked until the end of the school year?
And so, yeah, until the, for the next, yeah, week, okay?
And then until June, then we're from the 21st through the June, June 2nd, we're doing, still doing mask.
Indoors.
Indoors.
Indoors. Okay. And then after June 2nd, what are we saying that no mask? Pre-COVID, how about that? Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID, yeah.
Mask optional.
Mask optional.
Pre-COVID, we would have never let a student walk into a, a building with a mask on. It would have been against. Weird to think about now, but sure.
Yeah. You're not allowed to wear a mask when you're committing a crime. That's against the law, so.
Sorry to say that again.
It's against the law to wear a mask.
Because of your mask.
It's, I'm just trying to be humorous. Um, it's against the law to wear a mask while you're committing a crime. So, so otherwise, if you're not wearing a mask, then it might be a crime. So it's kind of a dichotomy there. So the, um, so the motion is, um, that we would exempt graduation from, uh, mask policy and have it be mask optional. And all other, um, regulations or policy items would stay in effect.
Until the 20th.
Second.
Until school is out, through, through the remainder of the school year.
Actually, through June 2nd. Indoor man, indoor mask.
But the rest of the policy is still required, outdoor masking.
Outdoor optional. From May 21st to June 2nd. May 24th, let's do May 24th. Okay. And then June, after June 2nd, we're doing what? For the summer.
For summer programs.
Yep.
Mask optional. Are you all there yet? Do you need more time to think about that?
For, for summer programs that start, they are 24th, right?
Correct.
I don't think we have, I don't know how much option we have for indoor activities for June 2nd because there's still statewide mandates.
Right, right, right. Both those, we go to 24th for indoor. They're both indoor on the week of the 24th. Yep. So masks are still.
Remained because that's still mandate. Post man, post June 2nd for things like college credit plus, is that happening in person, I assume, or credit recovery?
Credit recovery.
Um, any kind of summer, um, tutoring, summer employees that are working in the building?
That would be, we follow the state guidance.
Oh, the state guidance. Are the rest of you comfortable with that? Okay.
So would you, um, make the motion?
I don't know.
Okay. Is there a second on the adjustment to our mask and policy for the remainder of the school year? Okay, Mrs. Long?
So can we just recap so we know we're. So through the rest of the school year, we are staying with our current policies. Graduation, mask optional only. Everything else, we are staying with our current mandates. From May 24th through June 2nd, if it's indoor, we're still following our mandates. It's masks, the same protocols. If it's an outdoor activity from May 24th to June 2nd, optional. And then from June 2nd, for the summer, we haven't made a decision for next school year, but for the summer, uh, following state policy with the health order. Is that accurate?
Personal responsibility, personal choice, yeah.
And then discussion for the next school year is still out there.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're all.
No, very good. Thank you very much. You followed that snorkel very well. Any further discussion on that item? All right. Mr. Long, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Motion passes.
Levy, so the next thing here is Levy. Again, uh, thank you to the voters and thank you for all the volunteers that provided essential information and facts about the school district. Uh, we appreciate the countless hours, uh, that everyone spent and, uh, we do know that it is a partnership with the community. I like that there were numerous people that, that spoke tonight. You know, this is a great forum, a great way to, to get your input to, directly to the board. Again, there's always email to the board or email, hand or email to me or phone call to me or meet with me or meet, you know, individual board members. As I know the board is, but I'm also, uh, available, um, widely available to talk to people, uh, via phone, via Zoom or Google Meet or via in-person. Those are all fine ways to, to, uh, to communicate. Anything else on the levy? Such a big thank you and appreciate it.
I've got a few things, as you might imagine, here. Um, one, uh, yeah, go to sleep, Audrey. The, uh, you know, as we look ahead now, our five-year forecast looks a whole lot better than it did week before last or last week, right? So tonight is not the time. We don't have the information. We don't have, most vitally, the parental input. But let's just, you know, looking for what we see right now, we're looking at, we have, what is it, around, uh, 2025? We're now looking at 11.9 million dollars, you know, that is what we project to have cash on hand. So obviously that's going to be affected by things we can't fully appreciate or project at this point. But that's at least what we can, you know, somewhat intelligently project. So throughout the year, obviously, we've either individually or through other methods received input from the parents and community members with things that are desired for restoration. Uh, we heard a, a call tonight, uh, mentioning busing. We got that in a previous meeting as well. Uh, there was a suggestion that all of us received at the board and administration, I don't know, three weeks ago, and I forget, I'm sorry, the person's name, it's in it, but asking that we consider adding art back and potentially using that in conjunction with STEM. And they came up with a creative acronym called STEAM, where art gets added into that somehow and maybe you get a, I don't know how easy it is to find an art and scientific kind of person, but, uh, maybe that's what, what the focus was. But by no means can we commit tonight to restoring anything because it takes a lot of analysis and, um, and the thing I, I would just want to really underscore here, what is very frustrating for us as, uh, as board members, and I think I speak to the administration as well, when we hear little to nothing from the community with specifics, it's really hard to know, is it just a, you know, a squeaky wheel or is it a, is it a freight train behind it as far as needs? So if you are passionate and you and a group of people are passionate about restoring art, about getting busing, I would highly encourage you to form a group, get together, formulate a game plan and start communicating with us as school board members. Come to a school board meeting, um, and let us know what your thoughts are, because otherwise it's just pretty helter-skelter. But, you know, like, it seems to me there's a lot of interest in art and there's, busing, it's, it's one of those things, I, I don't have a good feel for it. You know, I don't know all the variables associated with it. But certainly there's a segment of the community that really has an interest in it. And so, please, parents, if you care, we have to hear from you. Otherwise, we're just throwing darts or trying to figure out what, what people want. But obviously, the community has passed this levy, has, has provided us with funding to keep these schools going and the top-notch nature in which they've been throughout the years. And we really, we need to know what you, the taxpayers, want with respect to what you've trusted and trusted us with, with respect to funding. So with that, so I, I'm going to read a statement here because it's just kind of.
Mr. Price, can you hold on a second? Can I just comment on the busing piece? Because there is a transportation thing on your side. Might be more timely now just to tie it to your comment there. So the, the, probably the biggest challenge with transportation, um, as we had a few folks here tonight, so of retiring, so we have five bus drivers retiring this school year. So right now, we have two folks that are, are actively getting trained. Then we have four additional people that are employees here, but they still have to get trained. And so getting trained to be a bus driver is a very lengthy process. And who knows if those folks. And who knows if those folks will, will finish the whole thing and then come, you know, come to next school year. So, probably the biggest challenge is any type of add of transportation beyond the financial piece is the bus driver piece. That is extremely difficult to get bus drivers, um, anywhere. As you drive around other communities, you see signs, so it's just not our problem, our issue. It's everybody's issue. And so, that's the other thing we need to be mindful of, is if there's any additions to that of, right now, because we still, we have about 250 or so people that are on our online academy, so they'll be coming back, so how many of those kids will need transportation because they live in the eligibility zone? And also, other people that maybe were driving their students this school year, but in the future, they're more comfortable with, with their kid being on the bus. So, we, we're going to have an increase probably of, of kids getting transported next year anyways. And so, we're going to be extremely challenged to transport the number of kids that we have this year based just on personnel, because we have four folks that are signed up, but they haven't started training yet. So, if, if all those folks fall through, which hopefully they will, um, we will have one sub. And so, if you add another, any, you know, if you add things back, route or whatever, then you have zero subs. Um, and so, that's just a real dicey situation, um, and our, our bus drivers do have done a fantastic job. But, so that's just another, it's just another piece to that whole, that whole puzzle. And that's why I just wanted to.
I understand, appreciate your statement there, and it, and it, it's a, it's a complex situation at best. Even if you had as many bus drivers as you wanted, trying to figure out what busing is really vitally needed versus a, ah, sort of nice-to-have kind of thing. And so, I think it all starts with, we need to hear from the community as to what their needs are. Because who knows, maybe you'll have some existing bus drivers from another district decide to apply or whatever that could help, you know, mitigate the issue with, with bus, bus driver shortages. So, I just think, first and foremost, we have to hear from the community. And, and so, if there's no cry from the community for busing, then we don't have to worry about it. Uh, but if they come and force and say, yes, we need it here, and here, and here, and here is the data behind it, why we need it, and then we can get the bus drivers, because we can say, yes, we understand you need more bus drivers, but we can't get the drivers, well, then we can't fulfill it. But at least it starts with us knowing what the community wants. And that's really what I'm calling for here, is that we've got to hear from the parents with whatever they want. They want a chess football team, you know, I'm not saying any of that stuff can come back, I'm just making a, just random thoughts here. If it's something you're passionate about, we have to hear it. And we have to be exceedingly financially prudent with respect to anything we bring back. Uh, because, again, we have a levy that was passed, good for seven years. And, uh, and so, we've got to be very judicious and conservative with how we go forth. And so, we can't make any commitments tonight, I, I understand that, and we shouldn't. But we need to listen, and the parents really need to formulate their concerns and convey those to us.
Kevin, maybe an outside-of-the-box idea? Um, I know we keep talking about this at these board meetings. And it's certainly a topic that, like you said, is super complex, and we're never going to be able to hash it out, the five of us sitting on stage. Um, what are thoughts about, and logistic legalities about us appointing two members of the board to form a committee in conjunction with, um, Jacob, the transportation coordinator? Um, and I don't know who else would be appropriate from the district to kind of take the next few weeks, actually sit down, actually pull out maps, actually go through data, actually, then the community knows who to voice their, you know, hey, there's a bad, unsafe spot here and there. People know who is working the problem, and then come back and report to the board and provide a recommendation. Um, because I think us trying to decide it as, like, group think here is, is not going to be effective.
Agreed.
So, I, what, that, are we within the realm of, that's allowable? To take two of us in regard to open meetings, that publicize that we are doing that, and be on some sort of transportation improvement committee? And work with, um, members of the district to tackle this particular problem?
I think we can certainly hear that our, uh, and take, take input from the community and be part of that discussion. But really, our, our marching orders as board members is to set policy and get, um, feedback from administrators who are working those issues. Um, so if we were part of a, um, discussion committee, but I would discourage us from being part of a problem resolution, um.
So, I hear you, so, we do have a member of the board who is a representative to lots of committees. I'm representative to BSCF, since I'm a transportation committee.
Mm-hmm.
Can there be a representative to the board that is, or from the board that is in the know regarding transportation? And can come back and report to the board and make a recommendation to the board about what, if anything, could be done, what would that cost?
That would.
What?
That would really be our superintendent.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
That would be our superintendent to do that. It would be Dr. Cozett, who would report back to the board for, um, for that, for that topic.
Why is that, why is that different than safety? Or finances?
The, the needs of transportation, yes. Um, and I identify some of those needs, but the, the program resolution and formulation of the solution really is, um, under the superintendent's, uh, direction.
Okay.
Again, I'd, I'd be more than happy to, to work with Jacob, you know, Sigmund, or manager of business, um, to work on gathering information. And again, we, we actually, we actually met this morning of trying to, to see what direction, what concerns, what issues there are out there. And so, we're, we're working on this, and that's, that's why, um, that's why I commented earlier of the thing that kept on, we kept on coming back to was, we really can't even make, look at making any changes or additions, because we don't even know if we have enough personnel for next year to even staff what we are already currently doing. So, that's the challenge of, of, as we're looking at it, of, we don't even know if we have enough staff next year. Because again, five retired, we have two that are actively training, four that haven't started. So, you know, all six of those people don't make it, for whatever reason, or choose not to, then we're struggling to even, you know, Jacob's out, uh, doing a bus round, or we have to do a double up or whatever. So, it, it's hard to even get to the next thought process of adding staff when we have, uh, online kids that are probably going to be coming back, or some of them are going to be coming back, and our buses are fairly full right now. And so, as you look at the maps of the ineligible zones and the eligibility zones, it, it's, it's one of those, um, you know, we did the best we can, Mrs. Webzel and, 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 um, myself and, and Sigmund at that point, of trying to look at, um, that was before Mrs. Sigmund, but before, you know, trying to look at those ineligible zones to try to get them of, what makes the most sense? At some point, you just got to randomly choose, okay, the bus is not going to be able, the bus goes down here, they, they can't go down here, they got to pick up everybody down that road. So, of making those choices, and at some point, it's, you got to make a choice right here in capacity issues, and we're doing this neighborhood, uh, because of capacity issues and so forth. So, we did that a couple of years ago, and we expand a little bit, um, out further. Um, so, it's, it's real hard to say, this person that's in the ineligible zone, they get transportation, but this person doesn't, to add people in. Because once you start adding people in, um, it becomes challenging to say, we're adding you and not you.
No, I, I 100% understand everything you're saying.
Yeah.
I fully trust that you guys have gone through that whole process. I think that the, the link that isn't getting made is that we, as board members, get pressured to add back in busing. We have trouble articulating the things that you just said.
Sure.
We're having these, yeah, on a stage in the middle of, you know, like, and you kind of need to look at the maps. You have to understand it, you have to, so, I think, that's where I, we can't all five come in and have a meeting and meet with the transportation director and have, you know, get educated like we want to, but I also don't want to hear from a bunch of community members that they went busing and sit here and, and say, yep, we agree, we want to put some money behind that and force you to do something that's impossible, um, that like, are, you know, really hard to do.
Again, we, we can come back at the next meeting with, with some information, a presentation, if you, that's what the board would like.
What's critically.
Some of that information.
Critically needed, though, is we have, okay, it's like everything else, you can define your need and you see what your budget is, whether it's at your home or your business or whatever else. It's, what is, what's the need? I need a new roof on my house, I need a new car, or whatever. Whether I can afford it or not is a different, e- either in terms of resources or money, i- is another question. So, I think this all starts with, what is the need? What are the discriminators of need across the district with respect to busing? And then we identify what it is, and we identify our ultimate objective of what we would like to do, both in terms of funding and manning resources, but we may not need to do anything. Nothing, maybe, or maybe there's really no need, but we have, but we probably do, but until we quantify, but we've got to hear from the community. So, I guess what I'm not satisfied with is a discussion between the superintendent and the transportation director to then come back and tell us next month, well, this is what we can do. I think it starts with a vital and critical input from the community on what's desired and what's needed. And then you take that, and then you try to map out what you're able to do within the guidelines of budget and manning resources. We've got to hear from the community.
Well, how many emails have we gotten about busing? Because I've gotten one, ever.
Yeah, I've had two.
Two. So, I feel like we're kind of begging the community to give us input about something that maybe they, as somebody who's lost busing, I would love busing. So, if you say to me, do you want busing, my answer is going to be, absolutely, I totally want it. But it's not something I, for my family, it's worth, for me, a fight to try, of all the things that are going on in the school or things that we want, it's not something that we're putting our energy to. So, when we keep asking the community to send us emails, I think they've already talked to us. If they're not sending the emails, I don't know if we really need to micromanage busing at this point.
So, I got a report yesterday of a near head-on between a dump truck, sorry, a, uh, a trash pickup truck, whatever it's called, and, uh, and a car, because they're trying to thread the needle between two lanes of traffic on Upper Bell Brook Road. And so, I'm sure if we have a head-on and somebody gets hurt, this will become a really big conversation, you know, in July, well, not July, but in September, once we're back in school. I think, just open our eyes, we see there's a problem, uh, especially at BCI, and maybe it's not addressable through any additional busing, I don't know. But there is, there's a significant congestion issue there, and a safety, apparently, safety hazard. I've seen it both ways, I've seen it when it was like, oh my gosh, what is this? And other days, I've been out, I ran by the other day, and it was like, well, this didn't seem so bad to me after all. But then the next guy gets the report of a near, near head-on collision between a trash pickup truck and another car trying to thread the needle between two lanes of traffic. So, um, I just think it goes back to, what is the need from the community? I think we have to hear that, but if we're not hearing it, that's fine. You know?
Um, so again, that, 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 the traffic at BCI is, is challenging, but there was, there was traffic last year at BCI in high school, because they were on the same schedule. And so, you know, there was challenges in the last year also. But the other piece is, if we, we look at the, the laws of the land, people aren't supposed to be stopping on the road. I mean, there's, if you can't make it, if you're blocking traffic, you need to move along. So, we're trying to, quote, police people on, not on our property, because they're just stopping. I mean, you can't just stop in the middle of the road and block traffic. Anywhere else, that, that would not, that would not be acceptable. Um, so, again, we're, that, that's a challenging situation, that we don't really have control, you know, direct control over the traffic out there. Um, Mrs. Adams and I have, have talked numerous times, and she has spent countless hours trying to figure out the traffic at BCI, and we were ready to make, we were looking strong at making some type of change, but it would have been a pretty big change of trying to get traffic off the road. So, you know, it doesn't, if, if we bring X amount of busing back, that doesn't mean that the traffic, I'll choose BCI as an example, is going to be any less. Those folks could all be in the eligible zone, and they just don't want their kid to ride the bus, and I'm driving no matter what. So, you know, it's, you're, we're throwing darts at some possible solutions out there that may not solve the problem either. Um, so, that's why I get back to my comment, we have to measure the need of the community. And again, I would not be satisfied with just a report from the superintendent and the transportation director next month that this is, this is our plan. We need to have the community, you know, survey the community somehow, some way, where that's factored in as to what the need is. And if there's no need, then it makes it a lot easier. I, I would just ask, what would the board like me to do on that?
I, I, I think one thing you could do is send an email to the community and say, we need to hear from the community with respect to busing needs. I could see that evolving into an actual formalized survey at some point, um, to where we can, and I, I think it's going to take a committee, as Astrid said earlier, it, that's a meeting in itself. I mean, literally, we're talking, spending a lot of time talking about hypothetical busing here, in a very, very full agenda of the school board meeting tonight. And so, I don't think we can beat it to death here tonight at all. Um, but I would ask that you send an email to the community, surveying needs. I think ultimately, a more scientific, uh, developed survey is necessary to really define needs and requirements of the community, interest level as well, of course. Um, and then let that be a part of your report back to us, um, as you talk with the transportation director and, and BCI principal, you know, and whatnot as well, and try to come.
I think that would be reasonable to, to say, um, send, you know, to send a request out to say, if you have concerns or suggestions for busing, you know, please, you know, communicate them back to our info at BSSTFQ12@OH.
We're going to do with that information if we don't actually have bus drivers to meet that need.
I don't even want to focus.
Certainly, that's a, that's an excellent question.
I mean, look, there's no solution, so we're going to kind of make the problem worse.
No.
There might be solutions, because we're asking for concerns or suggestions. And there might be something that someone hasn't considered, a shift in schedule, a different, maybe that wouldn't fix busing, but that would fix traffic, for example. There very well might be a solution that we haven't considered. And so, I would really weigh heavily on, if anyone has any ideas.
Mrs. Long's point is, is appropriate too, to say, you know, we couch it with, you know, bus driver, uh, you know, options are very limited, if any, um, but, uh, but we, we're interested in knowing, is that an area where, you know, we need to.
I don't want to approach it from that angle. I don't want to say, hey, guys, we, we don't have enough resources, but what would you like for busing?
Well, we need to manage expectations, is what it is we're asking.
I got that, but I don't want to sit here in May and say, we're not going to have any bus drivers in September, because we don't know. There may be somebody sitting at home, and if they saw, you know, now that COVID's going away, there may be somebody that's already qualified to drive a bus. So, I don't want to say, we don't have, we don't have bus drivers, therefore, we can't address busing. I, 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 that's not the way to fix this.
And there's opportunities to explore, we have, we have money, and people are wanting to use money for something. Maybe that's a bonus, maybe that's a hiring, no one is able to hire right now. Everyone is offering sign-on bonuses and longevity bonuses. There are conversations that could be had, um, I, I probably think we've probably labored this longer than necessary, but, um, yeah, I think weighing heavily on community, you have inputs, now's the time. Especially if you have suggestions in regards to busing or traffic management. Submit to X.
If, if we don't also identify that, you know, the resources can be an issue, then we're setting an expectation that just makes people more irritated.
And make more decisions.
We need to be very clear about, you know, this, this may not be a solvable problem, but, you know, whatever suggestions you have, we'd be happy to hear. but, you know, whatever suggestions you have, we'd be happy to hear. I don't wanna, I don't wanna back us into a corner.
I, but by my, I've seen my fellow board members, administration figures, uh, opinion that we may not have, we have, may not have a defined need, we may not need to do anything else. I don't know. So I, I'm not convinced myself personally, we have to bring busing back. But I'm also not convinced that we don't need to bring busing back. So I'm, I'm not convinced either way. We need to listen to the community, and David, I agree with you as well, we can, with an introductory email, say, we are facing resource issues, however, you know, we would like to hear from the community. I just wanna say, you probably can't, I don't, it's how you cast the email, we probably can't help you, because we can't hire enough bus drivers. But if we could, what would you like? I don't wanna paint it, I don't wanna paint it like that. I wanna say, you know, oh, you know, you can do it more, more optimistically, hey, we'd like to look at restoring busing, but please keep in mind, we've got resource issues for hiring, blah, 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 blah. So I'm not opposed to identifying that. I just don't want that to be the prevalent message coming through.
Well, I agree with that.
Yeah.
So is that what the board would like me to do?
Um, I can
Cause I just wanna make sure that the expectations are clear.
Mrs. Laffman, you, you haven't, uh, we haven't dragged you into this. I think we do, we reach out to the community. Parents, yes.
Yes.
To the parents.
All right, I will do that.
Thank you.
If I recall correctly, we were still talking about the levy, and we jumped to transportation.
Right.
So I'm gonna make a little quick statement, I'm gonna read it light speed, uh, but I think it's important to kind of tie things together here. Let me do my best to get through it real quickly. Um, to the Bell Brook Sugar Creek community, I'd like to offer up my deep heartfelt gratitude for passing the May 4th levy. Thanks to you and you alone, our schools are now able to return to some semblance of normalcy and stability from a financial perspective. That said, any happiness in seeing the levy pass must be tempered by the knowledge that there are some in our community who will be more adversely affected than others by the increase they will see in their property taxes starting in 2022. Some of our retired elderly will be especially affected by the property tax increase. Additionally, we should keep in mind that 47% of those who voted, voted against the levy. That shows we have a problem. We as a school district failed to effectively communicate the essential need for this levy. But it's not just the school district's issue. Many in our community also failed to recognize how effectively the school is run financially, what a marvelous job the district does in educating our children, and how the school has no means for inflationary adjustment, other than to pass levies on a periodic basis. It's time, way past time, to find an alternative to near-exclusive property tax funding for the Bell Brook Sugar Creek School District. A couple of potential options are to seek more funding from the state, maybe perhaps in terms of a income tax kickback, this is a pretty affluent community, and so perhaps we could get an income tax kickback from the state. Or perhaps we could, as we talked about earlier, introduce a local earned income tax that wouldn't affect our retired elderly, or we could do some combination of the two. And, and for those of you that are retired elderly, keep in mind that while, as a social security recipient, you receive periodic cost of living adjustments, Ohio schools are forced to essentially operate off the same property tax revenue due to Ohio House School 920. Just like individuals, the schools can now operate off the same fixed dollar amount indefinitely. If you file a lose, you're perhaps aware the Ohio House and Senate seem poised to pass the Fair School Funding Plan in an attempt to reform Ohio school funding in response to Duroff decisions dating back to 1997. If passed, and this is what's really troubling, if passed, the state will conclude that they have accomplished school funding reform, and they are now compliant with Duroff from Ohio State Constitution. Unfortunately, the plan does nothing to end overreliance on property taxes for Ohio public schools. With the latest model that I've seen, Bell Brook would give approximately $300,000 additional per year, while nearby Kettering would receive approximately six, oh, sorry, $14 million. The bottom line is that nothing will change for, for Bell Brook, and overreliance on property taxes will remain if we continue to depend on the state. Did you know that in 1980, Bell Brook received 66% of its funding from the state, and then in 2021, we get just 26% of our funding from the state? Are you aware that since 1991, the state has shifted 21% of the burden of Ohio school funding away from business and utilities to personal property and agricultural? And as well, keep this in mind, for some two, two years now, this community's had an opportunity to contact our legislators and potentially shape the Fair School Funding Plan in such a way that districts like Bell Brook would benefit. During this time, I, this is not the law of myself, I'm just gonna give you an example here. During this time, I've contacted myself, Senator Hackett, Senator Lehner, Representative Cupp, Representative Patterson, and Representative Lampton to discuss the Fair School Funding Plan and to offer suggestions for improvement. No need to raise hands here or in the virtual audience, but how many of you have contacted any of these key legislators? Also, over the last couple of years, a lot of energy and resources were put forth in opposition to a very much needed levy versus using those same energy and resources to engage with, with the state at a time when school funding reform was being worked. I would recommend that any of you that care about school funding and property taxes, contact our legislators ASAP before the Fair School Funding Plan gets passed. Caravan to Columbus, let your voices and suggestions be heard at the state Capitol. In parallel, community support for migration of some of the existing school property taxes to a school earned income tax merits consideration. A benefit of this approach is that Bell Brook Sugar Creek residents who are retired could actually see their overall tax burden go down. Let's find an alternative for school funding for this district. The clock is ticking, a seven year levy just passed. Let's get busy. Thank you.
All right, I believe you've finished with any talk. Let's move on to Sugar Creek
Dr. Cozett, do you wanna talk about that, or you want me to, or?
You wanna go ahead?
Okay.
Then I'll, I'll, I will chime in on that.
You want me to go ahead, then?
Yeah.
Okay. So I was contacted by, uh, one of the, uh, township trustees, asking about the potential utilization of the parking lot by the, uh, gravel parking lot by the water tower for the establishment of a veterans memorial. Um, and they would, they would, uh, they asked about potentially purchasing that gravel lot, uh, paving it, putting a veterans memorial there. And so that was the request. Um, there was also some additional discussion that, and this pred- certainly predates my arrival on the board some years ago, uh, across feedwire in that field that's just to the north there, from the water tower. That was formerly school, uh, property that was, uh, provided to the Bell Brook Sugar, sorry, to the, uh, Parks District. And, um, so there is a potential for that veterans memorial to go there, in which case the school board would have no involvement in that. Um, and there was some confusion there as to whether that was, uh, some agreement with the Parks Department as to whether that land could be, ever be used. Cause if, if the township is gonna use it, they actually have to purchase that property. They can't just go put a monument there and a memorial. They've actually got to purchase the land. And, and the Parks District was under some impression, uh, that they perhaps, or so I've heard, cannot sell that for the purpose even to another government entity. So I don't have a position on this, one way or the other. They asked that we introduce it, that we consider it. So really what it boils down to is, um, twofold, is there any corporate knowledge here on the board of an agreement that the field across from Feedwire, north side of, from the, uh, water tower, any prohibition that we would expect from the Parks Commu-, uh, Parks District for, for not allowing that to be, forcing that to be sold to the, uh, uh, to the, uh, township for the purposes of creating a VA, sorry, veterans memorial? And then, um, and then probably more pertinently to the board, would there be interest in considering the offer of selling that, um, gravel parking lot? They would pave it, it would be fully accessible to the school district, it would remain so, um, if, then we'd have a nice parking lot where people are gonna, you know, practice in the fields there or whatnot. Um, so that's kind of it in a nutshell. Dr. Cozett, you know a little bit, you've did a little bit checking on more with respect to the, any potential previous agreement with the Park District about the land, or if it's given or provided to the Park District. So that's what I know.
Yep. So I went back and looked at the agreement with them, and there is nothing in the agreement that mentions any type of prohibition. So if there's something out there, I, I have no evidence of that.
I'm also listening. Dr. Sophia Shaking has said that he does not know of any.
There's no agreement that this is a legal issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that's what the agreement, I mean, I, I read the agreement that was passed, uh, 10, 11 years ago, I believe, and there's nothing in that agreement that states any type of prohibition of any nature. I would be really apprehensive of giving up our, our, our land on the corner there. Um, just, you, you just don't know about what future uses that could be for us, and that's very accessible to, to our students and to us, who knows what the future use could be of that corner property right there. Um, across the street, I think that would be a great use of that property, that there's just grass there. Um, I think that would look great there of the, any type of memorial or anything that the township or Parks, not to be a township, but any better use than what's going on with it right now.
Uh, I'm sure you're concerned about, um, giving up any of the property there, particularly for the access to, to that, um, additional field that's beyond the, the practice fields. So I would be, I'd be reluctant to, um, to give that up. For the same reasons, we don't really know where that's, you know, what opportunities or options we might, might need it for in the future. We can't just find more land.
So I don't think we can necessarily formalize, need to formalize a response to the land purchase, uh, interest to purchase land. Guess we can kind of keep that in the back of our minds, uh, and then in the meantime, I'll respond back to them and let them know, hey, we would encourage you to check out the field across Feedwire there, um, cause from our perspective, there is no prohibition from, from us for you to use that, uh, to purchase that from the Parks District and erect a monument there. If they, for some reason, say it's a brick wall, you know, we can come back and look at this, I guess, in June, uh, more formally. Uh, but at least they want me to introduce this for discussion tonight, so.
Uh, I would prefer that our superintendent, um, make that communication.
And that's fine. I can talk, I can talk to Mr. Cozett.
Yeah, I, I, they, they approached me, so I was just, you know, just as courtesy, just responding.
I'll get back to him.
So, yeah. So that, you've got it.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Do, the next on is transportation, although we've, I think.
Can we talk about that? No, just kidding.
I think, I was gonna say that this is dead, and now it says dead. Um, and finally, public meetings, do we have other discussion on public meetings?
We need to do something. We need to figure out what it is.
I have a proposal.
I'm sorry?
I have a proposal that I think might make this a short conversation.
Say again?
I said, I have a proposal, I think might make this a short conversation. I think we have a few community members who actually provided feedback on ideas for having community, um, meetings. The two that I've received, both of those individuals are on your advisory committee, or at least have been newly, I think, added to your advisory committee. So could we request that superintendent's advisory committee, which is actually a, a kind of a, a good makeup of, uh, contains members of all different ages and sectors of the community, both parents and elderly members and business members, and, um, could we ask them to provide a recommendation regarding community engagement? Um, or, I think that would be a really good forum to help us develop or address the need for community engagement.
I can definitely ask them for input.
I think, I think that's a good path to go down, um, rather than us sit here and debate it.
I can do that within the next month or so here, try to get that group together, it might be a good end of the year.
Cause, yeah.
Yep. Okay. I can do that.
Does that, um, Kevin, is that?
Yes, that's good. I mean, cause we're not gonna stop tonight, right? I mean, so, uh, Dr. Cozett, you can get some feedback from that group. It's a, it's a keen observation, and it's, it's a wide demographic of representatives across our community.
Yep.
Uh, we're not gonna have a BL, we don't have an answer anytime soon. We just, I just think, we just need to find an improvement, because, as I expressed at the last meeting, I just find it, if I find it frustrating, I think the community goes, that when we open up the meeting, we say this is a meeting, uh, you know, for the board and the, to connect the business to the board in public, it's not a public meeting, and it's just like, okay, the obvious question is, when is that? And currently, there is none. And so we need to find something, some methodology by which we can have a more open rapport and, uh, you know, just transparency and openness and receptiveness to the community. And I don't have the, the perfect answer for that by any means, but a broad committee like that could certainly help. And they, they, this is something I probably never thought of. They get all the credit for it, I don't care. So, that's all.
All right then. Anything else? Yeah? Next is for executive session for the purpose of preparing, for the purpose of preparing for conducting and reviewing negotiation sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, per revised Code 121.22, paragraph G4, and for the purpose of considering complaints against a public official, per revised Code 121.22, paragraph G1. Do we have a motion? Mrs. Dorn? Mrs. Laffman? Mr. Lyman, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
Mrs. Long?
Yeah.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Laffman?
Motion passes. We will go into executive session. Thank you all for coming this evening. We expect real, um, action to take place after our executive session is complete. You are, of course, all welcome to stay and wait if you choose, but, um, that would certainly be up to you.